All right, good morning everybody. It's eight thirty. We'll call the meeting to order for Tuesday, May twenty-seventh. First item is to approve the agenda.
Moves are approved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same motion carried. Any citizens to be heard today on items not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard? Third and final call. Any citizens to be heard? We'll move on. Approval of payments, bills and vouchers.
Move to pay. Second?
Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same motion carried. We'll move to our eight thirty-five item, and this is an approval of the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen county feedlot program delegation agreement and work plan as amended. And we've got Kevin and Craig who's gonna come up here and give us a bunch of words of wisdom on feedlots. Good morning.
Good morning. I know we had sent one to begin with, but through all of this, down at BCA, we sent it in when you guys signed it, and they want, you know, the statute is seven percent. Well, he wanted us to do fifteen for the next three years to complete them all, and I'm like holding buckets. I don't know how we're gonna get that done. So then, that's when all the emails started with all the other districts going, "You can't do this." So, this went on, because this was supposed to have been signed back in February, like it was. Well, we just got answer of last week, one day of, yeah, this'll work if we change some wording in one of the thirty-day plan, if they're out of compliance, so a thirty-day letter, I mean, so.
There's a number of the, of the districts and counties that, you know, don't just specifically have a feedlot officer, that, that's all they work on.
Right.
And I think there's a lot of opposition, especially to the, to the north of us that I'm aware of, that those feedlot officers that are, as part of their job, need to go out and do the inspections like, like Craig is, is doing. And to be asked to take on the minimum, which is seven percent by law, to ask them to do fifteen percent, I think is unreasonable. And that has, that has been portrayed up and down the valley. There are a lot of guys, um, get up in the Thief River Falls area, and John, you probably know Howard Person. He's been the county extension person for many years up there. He is to the point where he's so frustrated, he's just given up the program and said, "You can, MPCA, you can take it on yourself." So they're in the process of trying to find an additional person. They've asked the SWCD to take on the Pennington County and maybe Marshall County feedlot officer position. I guess all we're asking is if we put in our work plan, which Craig has done now, is that we will do the minimum, what's required of us, seven percent. If we do more feedlot inspections, all well and good, but, um, you know, and we'll try our best to do more, but if the minimum that we do is seven percent, that's meeting the standard that is required by law, we think that's, that's what we wanna submit. There are also some penalties possibly for, if you, if you put in your work plan to do more, say if you're gonna say ten per, ten percent, or if you wanted to say ten feedlots rather than this, in our county, seven or eight feedlots would be the seven percent figure that the state is, is asking us to do. Um, if we would put down ten, or in Craig's case, they wanted to do fifteen feedlots, basically double what is required, and we don't do that fifteen that we put in our work plan, then there are potentially some penalties to be paid. And we just don't wanna risk that. There are some provisions in there apparently by, you know, if there's some, something that says, you know, act of God, or something that happened, that you couldn't do it, there are some outs. But, um, I guess the, we would just as soon not risk that, and if we do more than, than the seven percent that we're asked to do, all well and good, but to put down on paper that you're gonna do more and, and not do, to, to possibly risk a, a penalty in our, our state grant, we would just as soon not do that.
So there were, there were no changes in the law to go to the fifty. It was simply their desire that it, we, we go to fif- fifty.
Right, and there's a, there's a regional representative, a person on Detroit Lakes, Molly Costin, that Craig has talked to back and forth a number of times to, she used to work for the SWCD office in Hubbard County, and, uh, you know, basically, she, she understands that, you know, most of the time the SWCDs have other duties, and the feedlot officer position is, is a part of, of those responsibilities. So, I think she's all on board. It's the, the higher-ups in the MPCA office that are kinda directing this down the line to, they would like to see more done. There's, we, we did offer to them, you know, if, if we didn't do this, you know, MPCA, you can have it back, and, and not that we were intending to do that, but just to be playing a little hardball. And they came back and said, "Well, the only times that they would go out and inspect these feedlots that, uh, that we're being asked to do is if there was a complaint."
Yeah, they never did it before.
Right, so I mean, we're looking at, you know, if there's forty-five feedlots left in the county to inspect, you know, it may take, one a year, or, or whatever, it may take them forty-five years to do it. So I would think they'd be happy at our rate, you know, six years, six to seven years to get this, to get this done, and possibly faster if we do more than the seven percent.
And you still do respond to requests whenever, or complaints, right?
Right, exactly.
In addition to the seven percent.
Right, exactly. If some, somebody calls in, we had one last Friday that called, we were out tree planting, and we had an individual call us and say, what, she, she didn't want to have manure being spread by the, by the cemetery because of Memorial Weekend. You know, we, we understand completely what you're, what, what you're asking. People are gonna be out there at the cemetery this weekend, and, but the landowner out there has every right to, I mean, nothing in, in the ordinance is the, or the state, the law that says you can't spread on certain days like that. No, we understand. I mean, Memorial Weekend, I, we understand completely what she's asking, but the landowner out there is trying to clean out their feedlots and stuff too, so, and spreading manure, and trying to incorporate it within a, you know, a relatively quick time. That's all part of the, part of the, the, the plan and, and part of the game that landlords play with. So, I guess they, it's unpopular decisions sometimes, and we understand, like I say, with Memorial Weekend coming upon us, it was a toughie, but.
Why did we have to do this over if we're still going with the seven percent though?
Because we, because we've been going back and forth with, we turned in fifteen, and then all the emails started with, "This is stupid, you know, you're gonna, we're gonna lose money, because if we don't get to the fifteen feedlot compliance checks this year," and it's like, okay.
Okay, so we did, we did turn in a?
Right.
So now we're going back to, to the seven?
Yeah.
And apparently, the person that's in charge down in, in the cities, um, he's on leave with, there are some medical, medical, um, problems that he's having, so there's another individual that's taking over the program. He sent an email last week that if, in, on, I guess it's on the item number three on, I think it's the second, third page, that they're basically stating that the landowner will be notified within thirty days after an inspection is made, and then for some provisions as far as what it will take to get the feedlot in compliance, that all needs to be handled in a, you know, certain timelines. We've agreed to that, to sign off on that. They will allow us to go back to that seven percent figure, and also there's a landowner assistance form that they're trying to create. And I, I put a lot of my trust in, in Craig and other feedlot officers opposing, working with that at this time, so I guess they're okay with it if, if, uh, if we're okay with, with, with the timeline issue that, that they're proposing, so.
Do we still get dollars from them for this, or has that changed?
You know, the state has a pot of money that basically gets divvied out to the number of feedlot of, counties that have delegated feedlot officers. And at this time, that, that dollar amount hasn't changed since we took on the, since we got the, transferred the, the provisions. And that pot of money stays the same, and additional counties that come on board, each county gets a part of that. So if you've got, you know, for an easy figuring, a hundred thousand dollars to, to, to work from, and you've got, you know, you've got a hundred feedlot counties, or let's say fifty, you know, each one gets a portion of that. As, as additional counties come on board, your part of the, uh, piece of the pie gets smaller, which has, is, is what has happened over time. And then the county is also on the hook for the paying seventy percent, um, of what the, the state grant portion is. So we get about ten thousand dollars, I think, Kevin, from the, from the state.
Right, yeah, and that, and that's all determined based on the registered feedlots in each county that has a feedlot officer, right?
Right, yeah.
That's how that works?
Yeah.
Okay. It, it's got nothing to do whether or not we do seven percent or fifteen percent. So, so they want us to go from seven percent to fifteen percent, not gonna give us any more money, probably less money.
Right.
And expect us to just be happy little pigs sitting here in Clay County.
You know, and there is a little problem with some, there's a little problem with some of the, uh, counties that are up, up and down the valley, because a lot of the counties have very few feedlots. And the state has given, you know, the, the seven percent of the number of feedlots in your county, or a minimum of seventy-five hundred dollars to each county, just as a, you know, playing, playing the, the feedlot officer program. And there's some of the counties that seven percent only maybe is two or three feedlots a year, so the state has a little problem with, "We're giving you seventy-five hundred bucks, and you're only doing two or three feedlots a year?" That doesn't seem to make sense. Well, we're not the ones making the rules out there, you know, our legislators have set that as, as the minimum. You know, in Clay County, like, like, we're sitting about a hundred feedlots right now, that we've got seven percent, so at the inspections, and, you know, some inspections can take a long time to do. I mean, if there's, if there's some problems out there, if you've got wetlands, or is there some runoff issues, a lot of that stuff can take, you know, very time-consuming to get cleared up. So, um, each one is, is different, and working with different landowners is sometimes difficult too. Most guys have been pretty darn good to work with, though. I will have to agree that.
Yep.
That, uh, I, I hope you guys haven't heard a lot of complaints from others out there, because we're, we're trying to do the best.
I haven't heard any, so.
Good.
Yeah. Now, before, you know, before we had some issues.
Um, the feedlot program delegation agreement and work plan is amended.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same motion carried.
Both of them signed, Kevin?
We need, uh, is, is one motion sufficient, or do we have to do another one for the credit report, just either?
Should I just sign this one, B?
There's one, I think on the backside, I think Kevin, you have a multi-colored one on the back, and that's Craig's performance credit report.
I thought it was on there when you had that.
I thought it was on the backside. And that basically is Craig's report of what was performed last year, two thousand thirteen.
The city of eight, twenty-seven?
Yep.
Neither one's in the top of the second, back page. Keep up the good work.
Any copies of this? Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, thought it was your performance, and Craig's. That's not that easy.
We're gonna be closed session for that.
See you, guys. All right, two thousand fifteen budget discussion.
How are you wait?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the commission.
Brian, Brian.
What we have before you is just kind of the preliminary calendar of, of, of target dates for preparation of the budget, and we realize it's early on yet. I mean, it's, oh, man, seems like we just.
We just finished.
We just finished and got underway, and, and here we are again. So, uh, this is very preliminary, and, uh, I know we normally bring something a little later as to where we're, where, uh, the revenues are expected to be and things, but, but right now, we're just kind of really looking for approval of a, of a schedule. If this would be acceptable to you to kind of follow this guideline in preparation of the budget. And then, I just added a couple other items down at the bottom that, for general discussion, if you wanted to talk about things, uh, at this, at this time, so.
Want to go through both ones?
Okay. Well, Mr. Chair, today we're having a preliminary discussion and, and just setting the, the, um, the calendar dates. And then, by June third of this year, budget seats will be provided by the auditor's office. And then the deadlines to turn in those budget sheets, uh, from the departments would be June twenty-fourth. And then we'd also want budgets compiled and forwarded to the county administrator's office by, uh, July eleventh. And, uh, the presentation to the county board, reviewing of the budget with individual departments if necessary, would occur in July, and then in August, and that's when we bring you guys in the, the figures, and you'll give us direction as to where you wanna go on this. Uh, and then the setting of the preliminary levy per statute will be by September fifteenth. So we'd kinda like to look for county board action by September second, so that, uh, if adjustments need to be made, we get a couple weeks to, to work on those there. And then, I guess, I'll back up just a little bit when we say July and August. You know, in the past, the, the bigger budgets, you've asked to have interviews at the board with them and to review the budgets. And I think even some years when things have been really challenging, all departments have come before the board members, and you could certainly give us guidance as to what you wanna do on that. And then we have, of course, our public meeting, um, for budget information on, in the first week in December, that used to be, uh, truth and taxation meeting, now it's called a public meeting for budget information. And it, just a reminder to, I guess, the, the public that are listening, that is not evaluation, that is not the time to challenge your evaluation of your property. That is a, a time to talk about budgets and ask questions of the board members about, um, the levy itself. And then, um, the final step will be the adoption of the final levy, and we expect, uh, final approval by the board December sixteenth or twenty-third, right in that area, certainly do it hopefully before Christmas, so. So we've got some work to do ahead of us, I guess. And jumping back to the front page there, uh, the indication from the legislature at this point is that the county program aid, uh, income will be about the same, and that's right about three million dollars. We're two point nine, very close to three million dollars anyway. We don't expect that to go up or to go down, um, any direction. I know there was some legislation this year, there were eleven counties that were supposed to be elim, or reduced from county program aid, and the, the legislature took special legislation to, to keep them the same as last year, so.
Didn't some actually get, go, go up though, that were, some of them really got cut hard last year?
Yes, they did, and some were to be eliminated this year, I think, or reduced more, and they, like, and by, it was eleven of them by special, Norman County was one of them, frankly.
I think Wilkin too, wasn't it?
And which one?
Wilkin.
Wilkin County was, yeah, they weren't to be eliminated though, but.
No, but they were.
Yeah, but were cut, cut severely, yeah. And then the other item that, you know, we'll go into the budget preparations on is that you do have some union contracts, uh, that, uh, we have, you have approved. Uh, we've negotiated and you've approved, uh, with a two percent cost of living, or a general increase, I should say, uh, for two thousand fifteen, so we will kind of proceed with planning procedures, a process, and with that in mind, and, uh, you'll make final decisions later on in that regard, so. Uh, and just for your information, I think that's about a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar figure just, uh, on that. And then, of course, we never know what the insurance is going to be, that's always, you know, even a three or four percent interest, uh, increase runs around two hundred thousand, somewhere in that area, so.
Well, on the health insurance. On the health insurance.
Yes, mhm, yeah. And you know also that our, our levy is around twenty-five million dollars, so for every percent increase, uh, it's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars increases that levy about one percent. So with that, any questions of you folks?
Well, we'll have a lot to look at.
I see the dates here, and I guess I better get going.
You got work to do, Lori.
I guess I do.
Do we need to approve the, uh, the schedule?
You know, it wouldn't hurt.
I would move that we, uh, that we approve the, uh, the target dates as suggested for the two thousand fifteen budget.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same motion carried. See, Brian, on your schedule here, um, budget compiled and forwarded to the county administrator's office by July eleventh, so as soon as you start getting those, you'll, um, by department, you can start to share those with us.
Oh, absolutely.
Except that you're talking about July and August.
Yep.
You know, 'cause it's gonna, depending on what we see there, it's gonna depend on who we ask to come to us and do some explaining, so.
Right.
Put hands on the wall.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to committee reports, while we're waiting for data here. John, you ready to go?
Yes, um, I attended the, um, adult mental health advisory committee meeting, uh, for Wayne last, last week, and that was interesting. I've never been to one of those advisory committee meetings, and, uh, we heard, uh, some concerns that, uh, that they have. Transportation, again, was a big one, and the other one, housing, affordable housing, and, uh, it's, uh, it's difficult for, for everybody on those housing issues, affordable housing, but for the mentally ill, it's even tougher, I think, so. So that's something we, we're gonna continue to, uh, to look at, and I did, uh, I do have a, a meeting, uh, today with Rhonda and, uh, and some of her staff, uh, to, to look at the recommendations that the advisory committee made to us, uh, when they were here last, was it last week or the week before? And, uh, so we'll see what comes of, of those discussions. Uh, we had the planning committee, uh, a planning commission, uh, last, last week, and that was, uh, we talked some about the, uh, issue that was brought up here last, uh, last meeting, last week, about the, uh, the concrete recycling that was a, a problem. And, uh, looking at possibilities, they're gonna be checking on the legalities to see if there's some way that we can, uh, can go back and, uh, and deal with that permit, uh, under the conditions that it's, uh, you know, the fact that, uh, they're using, there are about three times as much, uh, activity there as there was when it was permitted. So, it's, uh, it's a big change in that, and maybe we can, uh, re, relook at that, and, um, with the, uh, there was also a, a plot, uh, uh, for housing that was, uh, was considered again, and that'll be coming to us, uh, here shortly, I think. Let me see. I think that's all I had.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, all I had was the, uh, jail planning committee, and, uh, we're still looking at, uh, means of, uh, financing a new jail, and, uh, I think we've had some things resolved, and some good ideas and possibilities coming up in the near future.
And that is the only meeting that I had last week too, and, um, you know, as, one of our goals has been to, uh, take this, the need for a new jail facility is to, uh, try to, uh, come up with a financing plan which, uh, would not, uh, require us asking, um, the taxpayers for any additional dollars from a property tax standpoint. And, you know, we've already done certain things that are, have been very beneficial, um, and we're, we're looking at some other, uh, ideas and options out there, and I know we're planning on having a joint conversation with the city of Maury coming up in July, and, and, uh, I think we'll have this one as, as an agenda topic with them to go over some ideas there. As we know, um, when Cass County constructed their, um, jail, they, they, um, were allowed to have a, a, uh, sales tax, uh, option in play for constructing the jail, and they were able to, in a three-year period of time, collect enough dollars to pay for that jail, plus have dollars set aside, and they eventually used those monies to put on in addition. Now, obviously, in Clay County, uh, any kind of a sales tax, even if we didn't request an implementation of a sales tax, it would certainly require a longer period than three years, but, uh, one of the nice things about that is it would not give property tax issue. But we, there's a lot of discussions that have to go on, and we have to talk with, uh, different areas of the community before we, we get that far, but, uh, that certainly is one of the ideas that's on the table for us to, to be looking at, so. And I, I think it's something that, um, we would be able to fund, build and fund the, the jail, um, much, you know, on a much faster track, uh, which ultimately then also reduces the cost, which is significantly important, so. So, but we'll, uh, we're putting together all of our numbers, and we'll, we'll probably be ready to go to the public with it sometime during the course of this year, so. And I know Sheriff Berkus is also working hard on, on that along with his staff to try to come up with a, a good plan, so. But we do, what, what we do know is we keep, um, we keep losing beds in our jail, and, uh, at some point in time, they're gonna probably just say that our facility is just not capable of handling under today's rules and regulations set by the Department of Regulations, or Department of Corrections, so. So it's not a matter of, uh, if we should, uh, it's a matter of, we're gonna have to, so. All right, any, any other committee reports? Okay, Brian, you want to add anything to the jail one?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I, I think, I'm glad to hear you bring up that, uh, the financing of it, uh, the options of it, because, um, you're talking to a member of the public, you know, right now, and, and if they have ideas, that's, that's, that's great, because I think you're right. It's not a matter of, um, of if, it's when, that we have to finance this, and, and, uh, I think the board has taken some real positive action, uh, of dedicating some wind energy to this project. They've dedicated, uh, a certain percentage of the maturing bonds to it. Um, they're setting a little bit of aside from the general levy towards it, and I think if you had a combination of that, plus if you did look at, uh, you know, consideration of a sales tax, or whatever it might be, that you could pay for it in, in a relatively shorter time, and you hit it right on the nose, that, that reduces the price for everybody, the rapid, the, uh, the, how quickly you can build that jail. And, you know, twenty beds are out right now, and, uh, you budgeted four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars for two thousand fourteen to house prisoners, and, and in one of your reports that you had asked, Julie had said that if, um, we were reduced to where the DOC would feel that it's, it's proper, I think it would be an additional seven hundred thousand dollars that it would cost us a year to house prisoners out. So, plus, the, the courts know that when they're looking at visitations and attorneys and family members and things, to have prisoners located fifty, sixty, seventy miles away, it's not very convenient, and it's a question of, uh, of, uh, I suppose, accuracy in the courts. Do the, do the attorneys have ready access to their clients, and do the fam members, family members have ready availability of visitation? So, it's a real, it's a real challenge, so we'll get there, we'll get there. I did attend, uh, Representative Aaron Murphy and Representative Ben Lee, uh, were down at Gooseberry Park last Thursday, and I did attend that. Uh, I did talk with a little bit, uh, Mike Redlinger was there as well, and I did kind of broach the subject of, of the jail issue for that meeting, and the fact that we'd like a preliminary meeting with them, uh, ahead of time too, so. I will certainly be setting that, setting that up. Had a couple personnel evaluations, um, Had a couple personnel evaluations. The, I attended that press conference on Friday with the authorization of the diversion. That was, that was quite an event. I mean, it's quite a, quite a feature to get to that stage of it. We're having some plumbing issues, and I think we've got those taken care of out at DMV. The line they tapped into out there was the old tank that Highway used, and there was some problems with it, but I think we've got that taken out, taken care of, and done some work on the Lake Ag C Trail, and Grant and I will be attending a meeting on Thursday afternoon with that, and we feel pretty good about that, so. With that, Mr. Chair, I think that was my report.
Thank you, Brian. Dave?
Good morning.
Good morning. You've got four items for us today.
The holiday we didn't exactly get, or the bid tabs put together the way we normally do, but so just kind of summarize them. We opened those up on Friday, so if I could maybe get approval based on that kind of summary sheet, and then the ones that are most particular are the actual gravel bids, and I've got the numbers there to be approved, so if we could just approve it that way this year. What we normally do is we've got these bids we put together, like the vituinous mixture, so depending on where we're at in the county, I guess we'll use Northern Improvement if we're close to their pit, or if we're down the southern part of the state, we, or county will use Central Specialties and that sort of thing, so you can see there's different prices for different mixtures and different contractors. We've got Northern Improvement, Central Specialties, Ag Industries, and Border State, so we've got four different suppliers, which is kind of nice for flexibility. Then they're all kind of in the same range, their Ag Industries is a little bit higher, and I think a lot of that has to do with the fact they're pretty busy, and it's a little bit of an inconvenience to try to slide our trucks in there, so their prices are a little, maybe a little less competitive, I guess you could say. We've got the furnishing gravel, the corrugated metal culverts, and the rental construction equipment. The corrugated metal culverts, that again is just kind of a laundry list of certain pipe sizes that we would use throughout the year to be delivered as well. Rental of construction equipment on certain things that we don't have or that we don't have time or scheduling to do, we kind of use a little bit here and a little bit there. So the vituinous mixture, corrugated metal culverts, and the rental is just kind of that list of things to use throughout the year. And then as far as the gravel there, we've got 30 different townships that we get prices on, and we've got two contractors this year, Dunham Gravel and Turner Sand and Gravel. Dunham got townships one through nine, and Turner got 10 through 30, and I guess I could read those prices. Do you want to approve some of the other ones first, or?
Oh, we need, excuse me, Mr. Chair, we need to approve all the bids on the vituinous.
Yes.
Correct. I so move.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? That means any of those can be used depending on where the project is in the correct, all right? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most saying motion carried. Okay. And did you have other bids besides these two on the?
Nope, these are the only two.
Okay, all right.
As far as Dunham Gravel, I'll just kind of run down maybe townships one through nine on his pricing. Township number one, and it starts up in the northwest part of the county, goes across five at a time, and there's six rows, is kind of how it gets set up, so. Township number one was 1021 per yard. Township two was 950 per yard. Townships three, four, five, six, and seven, and eight, are 875 per yard, and then township nine is 870 per yard. And he didn't put any prices for, to be picked up by county truck. So that's townships one through nine, the low bid, and then Turner Sand and Gravel got, like I said, 10 through 30. And starting with township number 10 was 915 per yard. 11 was 1123. 12 was 943. 13 was 839. Township 14 was 938. 15 was 1090. Township number 16 was 1212. Township 17 was 1036. Township 18 was 998. 19 was 1033. Township 20 was 1078. 21 was 1215. 22 was 1060. Township 23 was 1033. Township 24 was 846. Township 25 was 930. Township 26 was 1185. 27 was 1060. Township 28 was 930, and township 29 and 30 were 810. And his price for the county trucks to be picked up, township one through 15 were $5 per yard. Township 16 is 550. Township 17 and 18 were $5, and then townships 19 through 30 were 550 per yard. So that doesn't include any hauling on his part, so that's basically just cost of production of the gravel.
That's for our trucks to go get it?
Yep, the second price is correct, yeah. And that happens quite a bit.
Yeah.
And sometimes we actually maybe hire him to put up a couple thousand yards, kind of a deal, so some, sometimes that does come into play, that second option there for the county.
Mr. Chair, we still, you know, use our own pit sources when we can.
Yep, correct. And then Turner actually did, he will crush townships number 10 through 15, 17 and 18 will come out of the county pit.
Okay.
And then the rest will come out of his private pits. Dunham has his own pit as well, so that'll come out of what he calls his Hanson pit, which I think is the one directly north of the county pit there. It's owned by the Hanson, I think there's, used to be three of them, now there's only one, but Dave crushes out of that one, too, so.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we accept the bids as listed for furnishing and crushing gravel.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most saying motion carried. Corrugated metal culverts?
We typically only get the one contractor, which is True North Steel, right in, over in Fargo. They've been providing culverts for years. Every once in a while, I'll get some pricing from Contech, a company out of Minneapolis, but they kind of want you to buy semi-loads at a time, and we don't really, we don't really do it. Some counties do, they stockpile them, and as they need them, they use them. We're lucky, we've got a supplier right across the river that we can get, and they deliver them to us, right to the site, so. Excuse me. I could get the approval on the True North Steel, and he's got a pretty lengthy list of different sizes and different thicknesses and things.
Is this the same company, used to be Fargo?
Yep, exactly, yep, they just have a different name.
I'll move to approve the corrugated metal culverts bid from True North Steel.
Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Rental of construction equipment?
That's primarily for dozers, bigger excavators, and additional trucks that we may or may not need. We got, you can see five or six different contractors there. In talking with attorney's office over the years, this list isn't to be exclusive of who we could or couldn't use. What this is is a starting point, and if there's additional contractors that we get a price from later and that sort of thing, but this is a really good starting point, and all these people here have helped us out in the past, so we advertise for pricing, and this is kind of what we get for the most part.
I'll move that we accept all these bids.
Second.
Okay, and Dave, you said that during the course of your, we can add to that, correct?
Correct.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. All right. Okay. Approval of state aid funding advance resolution?
Yeah, this is the paperwork that we've done the last few years, which will allow us to utilize our 2015 state aid allotment to continue with construction as well as to pay our bond for next year, or for our bond payment. Currently, we have about $183,000 or so in our state aid account. We would like to use our 2015 funds to pay for the 18 grading project as well as the overlay at County Road 3, which would amount to just about our max of 2.5 million. That's been in our bond schedule since we bonded last year, and we just need to get the paperwork put together and sent to the state on that.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most saying motion carried. Approval of state aid, that's okay, let's see if we did that one. Recommend award of bids for CASI 18 grading project.
Yeah, we finally got all our paperwork in order. We have had a little pre-construction meeting with these folks since, they're also doing the project on 52, so we went over some of the pre-construction items as well, but Midwest Contracting provided the low bid. We opened those up on April 1st, and it looks like there was, one, two, three, about seven contractors, so had a pretty good showing on that one there. This is for the grading on County Road 18, just north of the courthouse here. It's about five and a half mile project. Our estimate was about 2.3 million, and their bid came in at 1.1 million, 953,335.00, so really good bid, roughly 15% under our estimate, and they're also going to be doing the work on 52, and we've worked with them in the past, seemed like a really good contractor. If we could get approval on that and get the contract sent out, and I think they're going to start here within a couple weeks.
I'll move to approve the Midwest Contracting bid. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, approval of joint powers agreement for district-wide striping project.
Yeah, this is that highway safety improvement pot of money, that it's federal dollars that need to be spent. If we don't, if we don't spend them, somebody else will. We, the nice thing is the feds have allowed us to use this for our six-inch wide edeline striping throughout the county, so there's four counties that are included in this joint powers agreement. It's real standard, we've done these joint powers every time. I did run it by Jenny, and she had a chance to review it, and sounded like everything was in order there, and if we could get approval on that, we'll just move the paperwork. Grant County is kind of running the administration on this one, they kind of rotate that around between Grant and Big Stone, and Otter Tail did it one year. It's a really good deal for the county, and so our maintenance dollars are stretched out a little bit. This is where this type of work used to come from, our maintenance dollars of about, you know, just under a million dollars a year that we put into that budget by an item and.
But it wasn't all for straight.
Correct, yeah, there's a lot more than that. You've got the graveling and road repair, patching, and stuff like that.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the joint powers agreement as set before us.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Got a couple questions for Dave.
Okay, Dave, he's got a couple questions for you.
Yeah.
They did some work, you know, I thought they were going to, they were retiring the spots where, that had fallen apart on two.
Yep.
But they must have just put in soft, loose material, right?
Yeah, I suppose the plants weren't really fired up yet, they're going to have to come back to those and get them.
It's really, really rough right now, and there's, there's flags there, but I think people still get surprised by it.
Sure, okay. Maybe we'll have to put some additional signage up, but I'll maybe, I'll take a look at that, and we'll get something up a little better so we don't have any accidents out there.
Okay, good, thank you.
Is that done?
Yes.
Brad?
Mr. Chair, one other thing I should have mentioned, I did get an email from Pat Boyer reference Elder Abuse Awareness Week, and on Wednesday, June 18th, they were wondering if you or yourself or Grant would be available. She's checked with John and Frank.
I got it.
It was at 9:00 on June 18th, that's a, for the proclamation reading with the mayor of Morehead, but it's Wednesday.
Where's that, where's that going to be held?
I think it's at the Yum Comp Center, I'm.
I think I remember reading that.
I'm going to be at the event, but they need somebody to do the welcome, is what they're looking for here, and that's, that's right at the beginning, and I, I got extension meetings, so I won't get there until a little later, but I think it's 9:00 it starts, and the welcome is.
The memo says.
Sounds like a job for the chair, doesn't it?
I think you could handle it, Brad.
It says the reading of the proclamation.
What time is that at?
At 9:00, and it's at the Yum Comp Center.
I probably wouldn't get there until 10, so that's why I can't do that.
I've got it down.
Very good, I'll let her know.
I've got one more thing here, so.
Thank you.
Good motion?
No, I've got.
Oh, you've got something?
We had, we had received a communication from the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission, which Morehead Council member, Mike Hulot, is on, and they're having a meeting in Morris in June, and they're going to be looking for people to serve on a advisory committee to look at Parks and Trails Project in our district, which is an 18-county area that includes about 365,000 people, and I know I've had some interest expressed by John Young, one of the Hallie City Council members, to serve on that committee, and was wondering if we could do a letter recommending him for, for that committee.
Well, I, I know that John's been involved with this stuff for a long time, and showed a lot of interest in it, so I think it makes sense to.
I would move that we write that letter of recommendation for John Young.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most saying motion carried.
Is it just one position?
So who's going to draft that letter?
We'll.
Take care of it, all right. Any other business today? All right, we're adjourned.